According to our agenda, we need to adopt the agenda. So if I could get someone to make a motion to adopt the agenda, we'll move on to our presentation.
Mr. Vice Chair Holmes, I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda for January 14th, 4 o'clock PM, public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We got a motion. Can we get a second? Second by Ms. Sue McDonald. All in favor, show by raising your right hand. Let me digress and welcome everybody here today, and also Happy New Year, and make everyone aware, we have our other board member, Ms. Register. She's online due to a personal matter, but she is online, and we just want to acknowledge that so you all will know that her district is represented here today. All right, with that being said, we will have Mr. Byron Jones, our Chief Financial Officer, to go over our public hearing item, policy BCAE.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. Welcome. Ms. Weld, a new board member. Good to see you. We're here today for public hearing, number one, on some legislation that was passed in this previous session called House Bill 581. So I'll do my best to try to be concise on it and give you a few high points, and then we'll move into the, to the public comment. This will be the first of three public hearings that we'll have, and we'll go over that schedule here at the end of the presentation. We always start with some of our non-negotiables on the left, professional accountable, communicate effectively. That's what I hope I'll accomplish tonight. We'll see at the end of this meeting and after the three public hearings if I accomplish that. Focus areas leads over to the right. We always like to talk about our mission and vision because, again, any monies we spend should be supporting the vision and mission. Distinctive brand, strong leaders, great schools, empowering each student to graduate college and career-ready. For multiple years now, Dr. Simmons has been talking to everyone in the community about the roadmap to success, and these are some boxes of different shades that talks about how we intend to be more efficient and improve ultimately student achievement. So everything we do should be supporting the roadmap to success. I'd like to start with just a little bit of background information. House Bill 581 is taking effect or has taken effect January 1st of this year, just a few days ago. And essentially, it's a statewide homestead exemption that caps an annual increase in property values. Now, I'm going to jump around. If this verbiage is on the screen, I'm going to try not to read exactly from it, but if you want to go back and look at it later, you can refer to some of this. It, it really limits the growth or the decision-making power of the Board of Education. As a reminder, you already have the ability to increase a millage rate, which you've not done in, I don't know when, definitely since I've been here. You also can increase the millage rate, and this would actually bring that more to the forefront of a decision-making, be more important each year when we go over those military hearings. So you have actually one shot to what we call opt-out of this legislation. So the state overwhelmingly, and that is true, including Spalding County, voted in support of this legislation. But there is a caveat in that, that Board of Educations and counties municipalities do have the authority to opt-out, and they have to do certain procedural things to do that, and this is one of those tonight. The key thing, one of the key things to remember here at the bottom of this slide is if you decide not to opt-out, there is no other redo of that. It's a one-time only, and it culminates with some documents being remitted to the Secretary of State by March the 1st. So one time, one shot to opt-out, whatever the decision is, will be, that will be one that future Boards of Education will be held to that decision. Again, as a reminder, we never know what the legislature is going to do. Could they come back in future years and change something? Yes, but we just don't know how to predict that. So all that to say, that was kind of, kind of slide number one. And a piece of number two, first sentence by, if you chose to opt-in, homeowners could see a reduction in their property taxes. And you all have heard me say for five years now, 60-something-plus percent of the property tax bill is schools. I mean, that's the truth. So when you hear people in the community say that, that is true. So a value of one mill is about 2.5 million in the middle of this slide, so we just need to keep that in mind, whatever decision is made. If there had to be a, an increase of a millage rate at some point, I'll show you in a minute, a revenue reduction that we have gotten some potential figures. You would need to consider the value of that mill in the future if it needed to be raised. So as a reminder, you have a millage rate cap for Board of Educations of 20 mills. You're currently at 16.742 and have been there for the last five years. Show you a slide on that in just a second. And just a reminder with enrollment. Enrollment is another key thing for the school district. It is true that we are continuing to decline, which most districts around us are declining, for whatever reason, whether it's homeschool, private school, and COVID probably continues to have an impact on that, is where a lot of that started. But property taxes are essential in the sustainability of our ongoing operations. Without the property taxes, you are solely pretty much relying on enrollment growth or decline in each child. And I've always said it's about $5,000 they would get per FTE or per child in the district. So right now, it's a little bit over $60 million that Griffin Spalding is receiving from the state. So some of these next few slides, I'll try to go through these real quick. I show you these on the millage rate presentations in June, just as a reminder. Ad valorem tax or property tax, those are kind of interchangeable when you hear those talked about. Certified tax digest, again, that goes to Atlanta. Ms. Hollum takes, takes that in the August-September timeframe normally, unless there's an extension. You are a levying authority, and you work to have that rate of millage ratified by the county commissioners after your vote for millage later this year. The value of one mill is about $2.5 million, which we just said on the prior slide. Millage rate, you have a choice every year to roll the rate back, leave the same, or increase. It's not increased in Griffin Spalding, again, in many, many years, but you could have rolled it back to 16.029 this previous year. The difference in the rollback rate and what the rate is now is .713 of a mill, bottom, bottom of the slide there. Again, net assessed value kind of goes in line with the value of a mill, 2.5 million. Again, you're the recommending authority here, and rollback rate, which I just explained to you, would have been 16.029 for this year that we're in now. So this chart now, I hope this is okay to read. I tried to blow it up. It may be a little bit hard, but this is information I received from the Tax Commissioner's Office in Spalding County, and there was a budget template that was shared with municipalities. So the key, the key thing here is over to the right. Based on 7,692 properties in Spalding County, the revenue reductions, if this House Bill 581 would have been effect all the way back to 2019, would be a cumulative amount of about $9.6 million. And that is if we had left the same millage rates that we have. So comparative data, there's more sales to this, this chart, but I didn't put all that to try to fit it on the page. But if, if we would have had 16.742 millage rate for all of the years, the last five, that would have produced these differences over to the, to the right-hand side of the page. So current revenue, 22.3 million. Under the new cap, it would be 21.1 million, with the loss of 1.2 million in the current operating year. Some items to consider, you hear this, some of this every year, budget shortfalls, you know, could we do a better job of budgeting? I mean, that's subjective in nature. I'll remind you that Dr. Simmons directed all non-instructional departments to cut 5% in the operating year we're in right now. We did do that, and we can show anybody that wants to see that, what we did. Mandatory salary and benefit increases, you know, we're restricted from the state. The state sets the teacher minimum salary schedule. When they pass along a $2,000 increase, a 2,500, then we pass it along, and then it doesn't actually fund all positions. You still have your non-certificated positions, your custodial, your bookkeepers, nurses, folks of that nature that, that we need to consider. Do they deserve, or should they be, have that same increase or some pass along to them as well? I will remind you that for any employee that chooses our health insurance, so an employee may choose single coverage, and it might be $1,200 a year, I mean, whatever plan, it costs the Board of Education $20,000 plus per employee. We do not have a choice on that. So it's a little, it's about $21,000, a little bit more than that, but, you know, we, we are bound to, to pay those costs. So sometimes we run into a parapro salary, at least in the past, the salary was less than the cost of the benefits. And then you add in 20% TRS match, if somebody's in the teacher's retirement system, we have to match 20% of their salary. They put in 6%, we put in 20%. I say all that to say mandatory salary and benefit, doesn't mean there's a raise every year, but you just need to be aware that some of that's higher than the rate of inflation. Let me go back. I forgot to mention that. The second column here, CPI, Consumer Price Index. The state will be the ones that tells us or tells you what the, the most you can go up on a property assessment every year. So if you, if your Board of Education increases are 10%, if Governor Kemp says these folks are going to get a raise and is 8%, 10%, you going up 4.1%. That's it, and you're going to be capped. So that's just a little bit of literalness of, to the, to the language that maybe a lot of people just are not aware of. School improvement, that ties back to roadmap to success. We're trying to improve the schools in any way we can, trying to be more efficient, and trying to provide services for those in need. Recruitment and retention, you know, we had some conversations last year about fund balance, and how did we, how do we strategically bring the fund balance down? And Ms. Hope's going to be here in a minute to talk to you about the audit, the regular meeting, and, and we're bringing our, that's one of the things she talked to me about. We're bringing our fund balance down, and we're being methodical about that, and you passed a budget plan to do that, hoping to retain teachers in Griffin Spalding, or employees in Griffin Spalding, and only, only paying them a certain wage if they stay in Griffin Spalding. So anyway, I applaud you for that, but that's another thing that would, would need to be looked at if we had to be kept. Future legislative sessions, you know, again, they started, I believe it was yesterday, day one, got 39 to go.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Today's day two.
Day two. So thirty-eight more, and we'll see what comes out of that. They could come back and change something else. And enrollment, like I talked about, it has declined. We admit that, and we need to find a way to get them to come. I mean, that's just the bottom line. That's how you, that's how you cover shortfalls, is increasing enrollment. So five-year tax digest, just wanted you to be aware, this, again, is all public knowledge on our website. It is true, there's increases at the bottom. The increases at the bottom include new growth. That is not just reassessed property. So if you see a 7.945% increase on the bottom far right, that is people putting in swimming pools, building porches and all that stuff, and not just reassessed property. So that's everything put together. Millage rate, here's your rates for the last, since 2015. There's not been an increase in the millage rate, and I know if you go back a few years, I try to keep 10 years on this slide. I think at one time, it was 19-point-something way before I, I came to Griffin. So it has been steadily either decreasing or the same since. And these are just to show you, this was in Saturday's newspaper of January the 4th. Okay, everybody, that's why you're here, because you've seen that advertisement. There'll be another one, should be on January 18th. This will be what it looks like, advertised in the 28th hearing and the 11th. Then on February 1, we plan to run this one here, which will be our third advertisement for a hearing on February 11th. And then we also issued a press release to the Griffin Daily News. I'm telling you all this because there's strict requirements on compliance side that we have to adhere to. And Dr. Simmons has been making sure I got all this stuff right. So, so anyway, this is what everybody saw. So our timeline, we're here today, January 14th, 4 o'clock. 6 o'clock, January 28th, that'll be a later meeting, and I believe our business meeting will be right after that. February 11th will be our third public unit four, and then we plan to ask the Board of Education to adopt a resolution at the fourth, the work session right after that. February 17th is kind of a date we have pegged to get that stuff remitted to the, to the state so that we don't run into that bullet pot at the bottom for March 1. So whether that's hand-deliver, scan, email, we're just not going to mail it, because we know how, how we've had a situation with the mail lately. So, Mr. Chairman, that is, that's all I have.
Mr. Jones, could you do me and the board a favor and kind of do a synopsis on, I know people hear about fund balance, but I think we've been real, our superintendent and the board has been real strategic on using that fund balance. And could you kind of go over what that is and how much we got left, what we got to deal with?
The audited balance, 40 million, 44 million, 45 million, somewhere in that range. She'll be right here in a minute and go over that, will you? And so that's, that's a lot of money. I mean, that's the truth. But we have a plan to bring it down. The, the budget that you adopted in this fiscal year had a deficit balance, and that was for the sole purpose of bringing the fund balance down, because we have a requirement with the state, and anytime you exceed that, you get a management comment in your audit. They, they like to remind the board that you need to be planning on how to be deliberate in bringing that down. So again, what we did this year was put in a retention plan to pay, and I'm paraphrasing since Ms. Battle's not here, on a ramp basis, the years you have in Griffin Spalding, you will earn more money, and that's in addition to the, to the state and local salary that we also fund. So giving, giving, not an award, but rewarding loyal service to people that are working in Griffin, not if you brought 20 years and you're starting in your 21st year, you only get credit for the years you've worked. That could be anywhere from $0 to $7,000 a year.
And also to bring out, so people who are listening public would know, and employees as well, some of the raises that we gave out, we used from that fund balance.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we, you know, like I just said, the, the state does not fund certain classified position, like my salary, my office, Ms. Battle's office, custodians, some, some of the positions in the school. And I say that just the non-instructional personnel, that's the easiest way to say it. We don't receive any, any money from the state for that. So the local digest is solely what funds that. Same for the health insurance for any of the people that I just mentioned. If they're not a state-funded employee, then their, their tax balance is what's having the fund, at $20,000 a piece.
Okay. Before we move on to the public comment, I, I just, you know, I, I had the privilege of working with this previous board member. His name is C.A. Collier, a long-term, a long-time board member here, and how the fund balance came about. Mr. Collier was real diligent about our system not, not being broke or going broke like some school system have. And there are some that are experiencing some hardships right now. But Mr. Collier, he was, he was adamant, and he was diligent about our system putting money aside so that we can have a reserve to pull from. And that's how this fund balance that we have to work from, pull from, came about. And I just wanted to highlight this C.A. Collier because he was one of the longest-serving board members. I don't know if any of you out here know. I see people like Mr. Clay, he probably old enough to know who Mr. Collier was. But we, we have to give credit what credit is due. And I just happened to be a board member when Mr. Collier implemented, and we implemented that. And I call it the C.A. Collier Fund, but we call it the Fund Balance.
Yeah, I hadn't heard you say that in a while. It's been a couple of years. Let me make one more comment to that point. With fund balance, your decision to, or the superintendent's recommendation, your support to go to semi-monthly payroll, okay? We have to front payroll to do that. You know, our taxes aren't coming in under, in the summer. If there's an extension to the tax bills, it, it can get on into November, December, January, and we're still paying payroll, which now is semi-monthly. So again, employees, for example, got a check, we'll get a check tomorrow, January 15. Last year and every other year since we've been around, they would have waited a six-to-eight week period till January 31st. So, so we're the only one in the, in this recent marketing area doing that.
Right.
So we are differentiated. So another retention recruitment scenario. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I have some questions for Mr. Jones, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Jones, thank you for this presentation. I'm, I'm really confused about this. I know we've been kind of schooled on it several times recently. Number, my first point is this. I, I would like for this particular presentation to be on the website where our stakeholders can easily see it, not embedded in the agenda where you have to click on a PDF and blah, blah, blah. Can, can we do that, Dr. Simmons? Because I, I see my neighbors
Communicator.
in the audience, and I want them, if they want to go back and see this presentation, I want them to be able to access it easily. So if we could get that on the website where you don't have to go to, through assembly and all those kinds of things and see the agenda, I think that would be pertinent for our, for our neighbors that are here and that are listening. Secondly, I'm really confused about this, and I'm going to tell you why. The House Bill introduces a statewide homestead exemption that caps the annual increase in property values for tax purposes. I get that. So my home, based on House Bill 581, will not be taxed any higher or lower in property taxes than it is currently. Is that what I'm getting from this? My, my tax appraisal this past tax year, mine won't go after a 581 becomes law, or probably already is, I think. It, my taxes won't go higher or any lower.
My understanding is that CPI factor would be the cap, the limit amount. Now, if you go and add on to your house, there's probably a lot of things that, that go into that. You know, if you're just, just, just from year to year, I mean, that's, that's the language of what it, it sounds like, yeah, the CPI index, which on that chart.
4.10 in '24.
Yeah. A lot of people say 3%. I think it's just a round factor that, that's easy kind of to hold on to, but they gave us, this is the data that was given to us. So, I mean, to my understanding, yes. I mean, again, I'm not the expert on this. Ms. Hollums and them has given us this data, working with the vendor, and I'm assuming the county's probably gotten the same, same kind of information. So if 7,962 parcels, it would be affected.
Okay. So if, if, if what I just stated is true, and what you just described is true, then why would a school board, or this board, or this board be concerned about opting in or opting out? That's where I, the correlation, I don't understand. If they're not going to go any, if my property taxes where I live right now are not going to go any higher or lower because of this House Bill, then how?
I think you, as a Board of Education, already have the authority to do the same thing without the homestead exemption opting in or out. For example, you, as a board, can go to three mills if you want to, four mills, 10, 12, whatever, or, or you can go to 20, or as the slideshow from the millage, you can go, like Muskogee and some of these others, at 23.
Right.
I, I think it's more the decision-making is, is not going to be discretionary from your standpoint anymore. And if you are limited to, let's say, 4.1, and these increases go up, insurance, fuel, whatever, let's say those total 9%, I'm just making up something, because it was 8% the prior year, and you're capped at 4. Some of this stuff, data runs in arrears too, on how we're funded. We, we could be in a situation where you, you would have no doubt, but have to raise the millage rate. So you are going to affect the whole property base like that. But I think, I think it's more that you can accomplish the same thing, but it's in your decision-making authority as it is right now, whereas a lot of your decision-making authority would be taken away.
I just don't, I'm, I'm really, and I couldn't make the, the meeting that was down in Columbus that day. I know that Dr. Simmons went, but, about this, but I, if it's frozen, I don't, I don't understand how that would affect us. That's my, that's what I'm having struggling with.
You're going to, you're going to lose those revenue figures versus right now, over to the right. So we're going to be, if this had have been in effect when you passed the budget, you, to get the same revenue, you would have bumped the millage rate up probably 17.5 or 18.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. That, that helps a lot. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not really a question, Mr. Chair, but more of a, well, a couple of questions. And I, we kind of went through this the last time we talked about that. And Mr. Jones, this is a yes or no. Is it true that the school board opting out does not affect Spalding County Board of Commissioners?
That is true.
Furthermore, is it true that Griffin Spalding County Board of Education opting out does not affect the city of Griffin?
That is true.
Correct.
Okay, great. So I think that for those that are here who may want a little bit more input in, on what House Bill 581 does and how it really, what I feel that it does not support our mission and vision. When you look at what we do and what we're tasked with as board members, the main thing is to pass a balanced budget. By opting into House Bill 581, I believe that we will not have a balanced budget. Why? You just heard that the superintendent has asked for 5% cuts from non-instructional departments, right? All right? And in doing that, I believe that it also conflicts with our local priorities, being that, like I said, it does not align with the goals and priorities of the district, and, you know, it becomes too restrictive as to what we can do. Our democracy calls for us being able to have local control. It controls, it calls for us being able to vote our conscience and do what our constituents sent us down to 216 to do. When you think about the financial implications and how it could require additional funding or resources that the district just cannot afford, and so due to those budget constraints, due to those decisions to opt-out, really would give us a, a challenge as it relates to, you know, operational challenges that we may have, logistically, as it relates to staffing and scheduling, and the main thing that we're here to do, which is to educate the scholars that we have in our school district. I am encouraging everyone, we have three more hearings for this, two more hearings for this particular thing, and so I want to make sure that if you have not read up on it, as Ms. McDonald just asked for it to go on the website, and for those board members up here, if you have any type of communicate for, that you use with your constituents, it is in our best interest to be able to put this information out there so that we can hear from them, although we've already kind of determined what we're going to do, what's in the best interest of our district. And then, last but not least, the question will become to our board attorney. Legally or ethically, opting out, there's no issues with that. What further guidance can you give us on that?
Thinking about guidance as to whether you should or should not.
Right, right. Being that we're opting out, that there's no, like, there's no legal implications behind this, and so.
Not really a question, Mr. Chair, but, um, more of a, well, a couple of questions. Um, and I, we kind of went through this the last time we talked about that. And Mr. Jones, this is a yes or no. Um, is it true that the school board opting out does not affect Spalding County Board of Commissioners?
That is true.
Furthermore, is it true that Griffin Spalding County Board of Education opting out does not affect the City of Griffin?
That is true.
Correct.
Okay, great. So, I think that for those that are here who may want a little bit more input in, on what House Bill five-eight-one does, and how it really, what I feel that it does not support our mission and vision. When you look at what we do and what we're tasked with as board members, the main thing is to pass a balanced budget. By opting into House Bill five-eight-one, I believe that we will not have a balanced budget. Why? You just heard that the superintendent has asked for five percent cuts from non-instructional departments, right? All right? And in doing that, um, I believe that it also conflicts with our local priorities, being that, like I said, it does not align with the goals and priorities of the, the district. And, you know, it becomes too restrictive as to what we can do. Um, our democracy calls for us being able to have local control. It controls, it calls for us being able to vote our conscience and do what our constituents sent us down to two-sixteen to do. When you think about the financial implications and how it could require additional funding or resources that the district just cannot afford. And so, due to those budget constraints, due to, um, those decisions to opt out, um, really, uh, would give us a, um, a challenge as it relates to, um, you know, operational challenges that we may have, uh, logistically, as it relates to staffing, and scheduling, and the main thing that we're here to do, which is to educate the scholars that we have in our school district. Um, I am encouraging everyone, we have three more hearings, uh, for this, two more hearings for this particular, uh, thing. And so, I wanna make sure that if you have not read up on it, uh, as Ms. McDonald just asked for it to go on the website, um, and for those board members up here, if you have any type of, uh, communicate for it that you use with your constituents, uh, it is in our best interest to be able to put this information out there so that we can hear from them, um, although we've already kind of determined what we're gonna do, what's in the best interest of our district. And then, last but not least, the question will become to our board attorney. Um, legally or ethically, uh, opting out, there's no issues with that. Um, what further guidance can you give us on that?
Think about guidance as to whether you should or should not.
Right, right. Being that we're opting out, that there's no, like, there's no legal implications behind this. And so, um, in your, and I guess for what you're firm with other school districts, um, the trend is for most school districts are choosing to opt out because it doesn't support the mission, the vision of us being able to move forward financially in our respective district.
That's correct.
Thank you. And so, um, this, are there any members in the audience that need more information on this, or would like to hear from Mr. Jones or our superintendent regarding this information, for those constituents that are here? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Jones, is there a, um, is there a pro and a con side to this? I mean, I, I, obviously, I know the couple of them, but is there a, would there be a long list of pros to not opt in, and would there be a long list of cons for us to opt out?
I, I mean, I can probably come up with one. But, I mean, I think, I think a lot of it boils down to just restricting, restricting the growth and you making a decision right now that you will be tied to from now.
Right.
I mean, uh, your, your millage rate's capped. Again, I, everything I'm saying is under au- under the auspices that the state government's not gonna change anything. If they come in here and say you can bump your millage rate up to twenty-two, then that's a whole different story. But it's been that way since I've been born. So, um, uh, again, I think it boils down more to you can accomplish the same thing with your discretionary power in the month of June, July, with the millage rate hearings that you can do here, but you will be limited if you pass this.
We would be limited if we stay op- if we opt in?
Your decision-making power will be limited. In other words, if, if, if you have a deficit budget right now, you can guarantee you're gonna have a deficit budget in the future, worse. Or you're gonna cut the retention program, or you're gonna cut some vital services, or superintendent, I don't wanna speak for him, but he may bring in, bring in some things to your attention that, that we haven't had to deal with yet in the budget, just because there will be no revenue source. Enrollment, which continues to decline, property taxes, which will be capped, and, I mean, that, that's it. I mean, there's a little bit of incremental money that we get, but, you know, billing Medicaid, and that kind of stuff, which we do everything we can on that. But on a hundred-and-something million dollar budget, that might be five-hundred thousand dollars. That's not.
To your knowledge, are there any systems that have opted in for this? Because all I've read online is that everybody is opting out, so...
So, I, so I'm, you know, I'm on the Gazbo. We have about fourteen board members. I'd say all of them except for maybe one, and that's because they've got a, I don't wanna say a power plant, but something that's revenue generating in that county, and they're not relying on the property tax base for that. Most of the rest of them are. Where I live is, I mean, I saw the thing last night, and they're all up in arms to, so, I mean, it's, if you're not in education, like I said, we need to educate everybody so they understand what we're trying to do. If you're not in education, I mean, you know, it's a different kind of business trying to run school systems.
Thank you very much.
And to, uh, Ms. McDonald's point, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a, I tell people all the time, you know, I'm not the sharpest pencil in the, in the bunch, and, and, uh, I like plain talk explanations. And, uh, I, I think that's what we, we need to, uh, I guess steer toward in the future. But one thing I will bring out on this background information to, uh, bring up about opting out, the discussion is a one-time, one-time opportunity to address the concern over the legislation. Future, this is not just for this board, or president, superintendent, or whoever, but it says, future boards of education will not have the opportunity to change the decision of this board if circumstances differ, and the desire to address revenue shortfall exists. So, we, we're not making a, a decision just for the here and now, but, but this is something gonna affect, uh, our school system going forward. So, uh, we, 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 we have to look beyond this board at this day and time. And, uh, Ms. McDonald, again, uh, as far as the opting in to the legislation, uh, being a, being a old, plain old country guy, uh, homeowners could see a reduction, that's, that, that would be good. But, uh, the school system is kind of a two-edged sword. If the school system is limited, uh, guess what the school system does? They're gonna raise the millage rate, uh, if they have, if they have shortfalls. So, I just wanna make sure everybody understands what we're looking at. If, 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 if we get, we can't get the money through one million, we're gonna, we're gonna get it in the other. And that's why you have school system who, who have exceeded twenty mills. They, they've gone and got legislation approved, uh, to have millage rate like Muskogee County. Their, their millage rate is what, twenty-three? And, and, and when they see a shortfall, that's what school system do. So, I just want, I just wanna u- use a little plain talk, uh, in, in looking at what we're looking to make a decision on, because, uh, that, that's, that's the reality of it. So, uh, I, I hope that helps someone, because it helps me to look at it in that way.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any comments, uh, any questions? Okay, with that being said, we have, uh, we have, uh, public comments, and we are, we are going to, uh, forego all the preliminaries. We just ask that you be respectful and address the board with your questions, and, uh, uh, we'll try to get them answered, answered for you. But the first person that I have on the list is Adam Powell. And if you would, uh, give your address, and, uh, it's, it has here that, uh, you wanna know if there are grants or any other means to fund BOE, which option is best for homeowners. Uh, would you like to come up and take the podium, uh, uh, just sitting there with me reading, uh, what, what you would like to know, is that good enough? That's pretty much it you wanna know. Mr. Mr. Jones, could you address that question from Mr. Mr. Howell about grants?
Yes, sir. So, we, I'll paraphrase. I think we have about ten, let's say, eight to twelve million dollars in grants already. Um, auditor can tell us that in just a minute when they come up. Um, we get about sixty million, sixty-five million from the state based on enrollment. Property taxes on that sheet I just showed you, is somewhere around forty-two million, forty, forty-two million. In the past, we've had thirty-something million in S or COVID relief money, but that has been exhausted. So, we, we are actually losing that for next year. And we didn't, as a reminder, we didn't plan our budget on continuing those services, although some people have gotten used to those services. We had to make a reduction. So, if you add all that stuff up, uh, the whole budget, nutrition, everything's probably gonna be a hundred-and-sixty million dollars, a hundred-and-seventy, a hundred-and-fifty, depending on the grants. But the grants, if you take that COVID one out, it's gonna be somewhere in that, let's just say, eight to twelve, eight to fifteen dol- uh, million-dollar range. Special ed, get grants for special education, if you add all that together. And we, we're continually looking for new grants, anything we can get. But most of those are small dollar grants. I mean, everything we can get. We get a grant for a bus, Mr. Martin O'Vare Bus Bond, we're gonna go buy a bus. But even a bus, they give us seventy-seven grand, it costs a hundred-and-twenty. Because nobody is used to not having air on a bus now. You know, when we grew up, we didn't have air on a bus. But now, now we have to fund that. So, that's another, Esplas helps pay for that. So, I hope that's a little bit of insight.
Ms. Howell, that answers your question. Okay, thank you, sir. The, the next person is Victoria Brack. Uh, you, you come forward, please.
Jan?
Good afternoon.
Um, so I had a question on there, but now I have more questions. Um, I think my, my initial question was, what's the potential negative impacts of opting in or out? Um, like, has, have we assessed it from all angles? Makes sense? I spent a lot of time researching what the House bill was, and essentially, it's like you're, if we opt in, they can cap what they can charge for property tax as far as, they have to match the percentage of inflation, right, for the, for the state? So, if the inflation is only two percent for the state, they can only increase your property taxes by two percent, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's if we stay with the House bill. If we opt out, you guys have more control, right? Or, because that's what I'm kind of getting. Is that right?
Let me, let me read this for you, uh, Ms. Brack. Uh, House Bill five-eight-one introduces a statewide homestead exemption that caps, as you, you, you understand, it caps the annual increase in property value for tax purposes. It caps the, the, the increase in property value. So, so that's where the cap comes in at.
Correct.
Okay?
Okay.
Make sure we're on the same page.
Okay. It's, it's really difficult to understand. So, so at that, does that mean that the other homestead exemptions that we can already apply for, do those go away?
But that, that's not up under us.
Okay.
That's up under Ms. Holcomb's, uh, uh, auspices at the, the county. Uh, so, so you have to, you have to get that answered.
So, that, those are separate, then?
Any, any other homestead, you, you wanna, uh, we give you carte blanche, Mr. Clay. You, you wanna help us out with that, since you are, okay, you, Clay said, no, 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 no. But, but that, that's a different entity. That, that comes up under the Spalding County governmental entity. Uh, we don't have anything to do with that. Uh, that strictly is for Ms. Holcomb's, uh, the tax office.
Okay, okay. Um, so there's, this is your only op- like, time to opt out, but later? Is there a time to opt in, if you...
Or in if you don't opt out.
So, you get one decision right now?
That's it.
Okay. And I read it was like fifty years. Stuck with it.
You, you say, you say what, fifty years?
That's what I read.
Well, I don't, I don't think I have to worry about that one.
Um, the last thing, um, I, I looked at the budget for this year, and it was, uh, the, the fund balance. It's at forty-two million, right? Um, is that just money we have left over and we put into other things like retention and stuff? That's the, what we have left over at the end of the year? Okay. So, we had forty-four million left over for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget, right? And our mil- or what you guys get from property taxes, or what the school system gets from property taxes, is forty-two million. So, right now, it's okay. So, how does that, how do, how do you guys project that to change? How much more do you guys project to make if we, or will there be an increase or a decrease?
Wanna do that, Ms. Jones?
I heard parts of that. I'll try. So, so our, our, um, audit in a minute will say we got about forty-five million. So, you are correct about that. The, the current operating year, which, which, which Hope audited was what ended, June, June twenty, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. So, our retention plan, like I was mentioning, is gonna bring our budget in the negative, and you may have seen that. I don't remember the exact number, four million or so. So, we're methodically bringing that down. So, that should go down to thirty-six, or forty, thirty-six, et cetera. Also, we don't have to borrow money. And that, that, many counties do. Many counties that are around us that you think wouldn't have to, have to borrow money, because like I was saying, the tax bills are either delayed going out, there's a, a number of appeals, and they haven't had time to get through all that. So, those bills go later, and we still had to make payroll. If we had to turn around borrow money, you're talking about borrowing five million at five percent interest. I mean, that's even more expense we'd have. So, some of that is a planning tool that we have.
I think it's a good thing.
Yeah. But, but again, there, there's no hiding. We have a forty-something million dollar reserve. Uh, there is, the, the board, the superintendent's in a good, uh, situation for discretionary decision-making. That's the way I would say it.
All for now. Thank you guys so much.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mr. Jones, by, by law, though, we have to have so much money in, in the fund balance. Is that correct? To be able to...
Well, we, we normally attest to how many days we have. I'm not sure if there's a minimum we have to have. Of course, we have a, a fifteen percent threshold that the state says is best practice. So, we exceed that, you know, fifteen million on a hundred million.
Okay.
So, we, you know, we're higher than that.
Okay.
Answer your question?
Yeah, I'm hoping it would answer.
Answered? Okay, okay.
I mean, are you something?
Right, right. And that, like I said earlier, uh, the reason I made the emphasis on, um, C.A. Caria, uh, there were some school system in, in there, some still to this day that are in financial, uh, ruins, but, uh, they didn't have money to operate. So, that's how the fund balance came about. Uh, and, and so, we thank you for that explanation, Mr. Jones. We got one last person on the, uh, sign-in sheet. That's Greg McGivern. Sir, would you still like to come, uh, before, uh...
I'll pass.
You'll pass? You, 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 you good on that homestead exemption?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Uh, we, you're regular, so we'll see. Who's that? Hold on. Let me make sure the board is okay with you answering this, or whatever.
We are okay. We should suspend the rules for her, yes.
Any, any...
Come and use, ma'am, come and use the microphone so everyone in the room can hear.
Yes. All right, you good. Everybody...
I have a teacher voice. I know they can hear me. Come on.
I have a son who is a teacher here in Spalding County. I have five children, grandchildren who graduated from schools here. And I hear that there is one school in the county that's not on that hardship list or where you can get money to go to a private school, one school only, one grade school. Whatever you do, I, I can't figure all of this out. I'm eighty-three years old. But whatever is done, needs to be done for the students.
The voucher system?
Yes, the voucher system. The voucher system is, is there. But all I'm saying is that when you make this decision, where's the money gonna come from if you don't get money? So, you can increase the taxes. So, you're, you know, my property taxes may stay the same, and then you're gonna increase something else. The bottom line is, the rank and file of us are gonna pay for this one way or the t'other. All of us are. And whatever decision is made, needs to be made for the teachers and those children that are, their responsibility. Now, I have five who excelled in these schools, and I want the rest of the people, the rest of the kids, to have the same advantage. So, think wisely about how you do this. Put it in a prayer if you have to.
Always. Before you go, ma'am, do, do us a favor. Give us your name, uh, and, yeah, if you wanna, let, let, give a, yeah, we need to get your name and everything on record.
Well, I think Ms. Weldon, my seatmate here, said it best. It, it's a no-win situation whether we opt in or opt out. I think that's well said. Does that make sense?
All right. Well, she's filling that out. Uh, I think that's, that's, uh, that, that's all what we have on the agenda. But, uh, as you, as you see, and, and I think this point needs to be made, we, we all are Indians together. That's why we are, uh, flexible. We are trying to be transparent, and we wanna make sure that we, 'cause, 'cause guess what? Uh, I, 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 I pay these taxes too. You know, I got, I got, I got a couple of properties. So, it affects me just like it affects you. So, so we wanna be transparent, open. We wanna be inclusive, because this is, this, this affects all of us. I know you heard about those seventy-six thousand houses, uh, and I'm pretty sure everybody in here, uh, with an interest, uh, living in Spalding County, it's gonna affect them. So, that's why we wanna take our time to educate everyone and make sure everyone have a voice, uh, to be able to communicate back and forth with us, because when this decision is made, it's, it's made. So, uh, I thank you all for being here, and, and thank you for those who, uh, uh, spoke up, and thank you, Mr. Jones, for, uh, the presentation. And, uh, with that, with that being said, superintendent, do we have anything for executive session? Nothing for executive session. So, at this time...
Make a motion to adjourn.
For me?
Parliamentary inquiry. Make a motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir. Thank, you got a motion on the floor?
Here.
And give it a second. Got a second by Ms. McDonald. All in favor?